And commission wet session to order. And we ask that you please wear your mask, wear a mask because we. We kinda got quite a few people here. I know a lot of people don't like that, but we got precautionary measures necessary to what we need to do. If you haven't got one, get one. Appreciate you coming and this is a wet session, so our wet session is basically is for the commission to work. Public committee is basically not really allowed unless it's a special occasion. Kevin and Father, we thank you dear God for this opportunity to be together here once again today under the condition we are. We pray as usual that you guide us to make sound decisions and that it not be in just our interest, but interest of the public as well as the members of the taxpayers of this county of Edgefield. And we thank you for all that working so diligent on the committee and our staff. We actually bless them and keep them in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Old business, potential major subdivision Allison Point at my, you know, the Blue Sky. For our LLC is considered proposing development of major subdivision Allison Point. And this subdivision gonna be located Curritown Road and Neelin Road. Parker ID one twenty-six zero 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 four zero zero four zero zero. Dave and Stuart Thompson is up before us again, developed with Blue Sky. And they're gonna join us during this wet session and we're gonna take about about twelve minutes on this segment, we're gonna move on, cause we got quite a bit to do throughout this time. We're gonna open up and start the commission, I guess. Mr. Oliver, you probably the first one.
Uh, I gladly, um, I hope you can hear me. Uh, I do appreciate that you did make some significant revisions. Uh, it's not exactly what I would have liked. I would love, rather had ten to fifteen acres at the most, or lots at the most, but you know, this is an improvement, I will say that. I, I also would comment that, uh, the area that you have around the Magnolia tree is much improved. You know, that looks good. I did go out and I did measure the tree myself personally. I think the seventy foot out is, I believe is adequate. You know, it gives some protection beyond the drip line, which is what Clemson had said they needed. Uh, and I like the fact that, uh, uh, the historical society here in Edgefield County, and I believe John had got a letter from him today or an email attached to a letter, that they will take that over. That is my understanding.
Yes, sir.
But there's a lack of survey markers along that line, that property and stuff out there. So I just, I really don't know where anything is out there.
Um, do you remember the post? There was a yellow post, fence post, um, over by Mr. Bass's property? About that, that?
Right on Curritown Road.
Oh, this is, this is the corner right out by the Magnolia tree?
Uh, yes, there's.
It's about sixteen feet away.
It's sixteen feet away, away from his property. The tree.
So the yellow post is what?
The yellow fence post is the, the property corner.
Is the corner?
Where?
Procy corner.
Yeah, show that, yeah, if you can enlarge that out, Kevin.
Put your mouse down. Right there. That, that is the corner.
Show it, hit it again, show me, okay, right there.
There's a, there's a yellow fence post, Mr. Bass's fence.
That's the tree.
And the tree is pretty.
Close to the very middle.
It's scaled on the drawing, yeah.
Right, right.
And we have, of course, we have the letter. Um, we're gonna, basically, they, they will have full rights to do what they want on that property. We're gonna cover that in our, um, covenants. We've started them, but you know, we, we'll, we'll write, we're gonna write in there that they're gonna be actually part of the homeowners association, but they will not be charging any fees. And that will give them the right
Okay.
to access that property. You know, forever. And also, we're gonna, I thought this through a lot, and we're gonna make it so that they can put a placard or something up there, uh, Mr., um, Bettis? Rafer? He want, he, we talked to him for about an hour and a half the other day, and he wanted to do something like that. And so we're gonna write all that in.
Okay.
And, and it will be filed at the courthouse, so it'll be law.
Okay.
And, um, the, uh, we, we, I, I don't know if you noticed, but we pulled all the lot lines out of the pond. We have a large area now, this is the homeowners association, so everybody in the, um, subdivision has access to the pond and even area to meet, you know, it's not just like a walkway.
Okay, so that, that thirty foot right away that comes down there at the end, comes down to where the retention?
That's homeowners association property.
That'll be a paved road also?
The plan is to run, it won't be the same size as the main road, but the plan is to run asphalt down to the property corners.
Okay.
That way.
Just make it easier. It's going to go downhill right there anyway.
That is correct.
But that makes it easy for them to do whatever the HOA decides they wanna do.
Well, those landowners that buy those last two lots down there need to have access to their lot anyway.
That is correct. And we, you know, we have to weigh the whole, everything, so we, you know, we, we got to the, um, number of lots and we can deal with that, you know, with, you know, and do the subdivision and put enough, you know, income into the subdivision that's a nice subdivision. Um, we're also gonna have a very nice entrance. Um, we don't have a design, but we most likely will have a design of some sort to give you some idea when we come back in October.
Okay.
We're here to, you know, kinda nail down exactly what we need to do. So when we come back in October, it's a nice smooth operation. Um, the, uh, the, um, over on the thing, the average lot acreage says one point one two. That is calculated by the number of, the actual acreage of each lot and then divide it out, okay? It didn't take in, it's not taking in consideration the road, the, um, part for the tree, the ponds, et cetera, okay? So our average lot size is one point one two.
Yeah, and, and I, I have one, only one kinda question on that. We've seen the numbers when you go to the GIS map, which is, gives the things, you know, it always has forty-six point something acres, and what you guys have been telling us is fifty-one point something acres, so.
Right.
Who's right?
Uh, I'm gonna tell you that our surveyor is right, because he went out and he pulls the, he gets benchmarks and et cetera, is what your surveyor does. And that's how we determine what, what we're purchased, what we're buying.
Mr.?
I can, I can add to that. The GIS system is not perfect. It does not always have the perfect display of the lines and acreage. Anytime a surveyor, uh, does a survey of a property and determines its acreage, when that gets filed at the courthouse and then updated, the tax assessor's office will update the maps to reflect that in due time.
Okay, yeah, I would, I was thinking when I went over that, that I would have seen some flagging out there on Curritown Road for sure.
There was some flags, but somebody's removed them. We have that problem. It doesn't, it doesn't matter where you go.
Okay, yeah.
Even though it's a felony, you know, but you know, they do it.
That's true. But, um, I guess the other thing is, and I don't wanna take up all the, all the time here, although this is in, in my district, but, uh, the other thing, will they be able to mark around where the area for that Magnolia tree is?
Absolutely, we'll have it marked out very well.
Okay, okay.
It's gonna be considered to us initially a lot. So it'll have, it, it'll in fact have its own tax ID number.
Right. Okay, okay. Uh, other commissioners, y'all have any other things, you know, I?
I think this is much better, um, you know, I, I think, I'm glad we had the discussion we had at the last meeting, because I think this is a lot better design. I think it fits in out there a lot better.
That was our goal.
I would, when you come back in October, I'd like to see, uh, the entrance, uh, design a little better. Uh, you know, maybe some fencing going down, you know, on, on each side of the drive coming in.
Um, when you, when we bring back the design, would photos of similar entrances suit?
Yes.
That'd be good.
An actual concept would be.
Right.
I got another comment. What he's putting up now is pictures of homes. Um, majority of homes, or a good many of them, were built in Edgefield County. Some of them were built at River North. That's Edgefield County.
Is that out on, uh, Sweetwater Road or Wood?
Sweetwater.
Sweet, okay.
So, we came in eighty-five lots, okay? When we were gonna build two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're not gonna do that yet. We're gonna be well above, probably a median of three hundred and fifty thousand on a, a house. They're larger houses. Um, so, um, we just wanted y'all to know that, that what we're doing out there, you know, like y'all want, y'all mentioned, uh, Curritown, that, you know, that subdivision. So we got our lots up as close as possible to the size. And then we got, um, you know, the houses that are gonna go in are gonna be nice, you know. For our hiring.
I did notice that, uh, specifically, and, uh, I think one comment that I, that I did notice on here too is that, uh, the sidewalks are gone now, and I think I unders, I understood, uh, from Mr. Secretary that, uh, that was somewhat of your trade-off in there because of the expenses and stuff there.
Right.
I would still strongly suggest, I, I, I think sidewalks build communities and it keeps little kids out of the road. You know, because they can walk up and down through that. We want something that is safe. So, I mean, I can't demand that, you know, I know, that's, that's just my personal opinion. Sidewalks make a community and I think we need sidewalks, but.
We, we would definitely take that into consideration. It's also gonna have street lights. Yeah, we will have street lights, yeah.
Okay, that's, uh, that's great, that's great. I appreciate y'all doing that, cause that's, uh, you know, as I said in my, in my written comments that I had, I, I, I think you guys, you do this, you can bring, uh, what your development has been doing in the past. It just brings it up a step, in my opinion.
Y'all are familiar with what we've done in the past in Edgefield County. Y'all are not familiar with what we do. What we do, you know, like down in River North and North Augusta and out and about in Edgefield County. You know? So, we feel, uh, uh, you know, much better today. And we feel that there's gonna be, you know, we're bringing our asset, and we're not trying to bring in, you know, a non-asset that it's up to Edgefield.
I, I think, you know, I, I'm sorry for doing all this, but I, I think the one thing that, that I see that would be pretty beneficial for, uh, the property that's on the, the low side of you, Mr. Bass's property, is to have a, a really nice, uh, screening of vegetation down through there. I know we got some very mature pecan trees down there, but they don't. When you're up about twenty-five foot higher, uh, I almost feel like somebody's just kinda, he's sitting in a drone up over there looking right down over someone's property, but I, I.
And, um, uh, we, we're looking at that too. I mean, we can plant some dead trees. That's not a problem. If you don't do anything, then you'll come up naturally, but we can put some trees.
Right, right.
All this will take into consideration for sure, and then when we come back in.
Okay, okay.
We're coming in October, and we're here to listen again and, and it sounds like we almost got it, so.
Mr. Gabriel, do you have any?
In about that, a quick comment, we're gonna need to move on. You have a quick comment?
Uh, no, I think, uh, Mr. Oliver covered quite a bit of territory and, uh.
I got a comment from Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir.
You have always been, since I've done it, of course, turned about the second time. Well, our lots are almost three times a day, so we got a lot of money on that.
Right, I, I, I appreciate that, you know, you cooperate. Long, you working with us and we wait with you and I thank everything. So we, we appreciate what you've done up to this point and, uh, you say you'll be back in October.
Right, okay.
Did you have anything else? I kinda cut you off, so.
Alright, well.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we got new business here now. We're going to, uh, propose a land development, Sam and Alice Auto Sale. Darren Anger is proposing the development of motor vehicle retail lots. Sam and Alice Auto Sale, their development located at intersection Edgefield Road and Edward Drive at thirteen seventy-seven Edgefield Road. And, uh, the Parker one twenty-six fourteen oh eight oh oh one zero zero zero. And, uh, he, he had with us today to join on this, so, uh, what, uh, we have, uh, on this today, any, any update on it?
Well, um, as far as my part is concerned, I'm pretty much, until you guys get involved in it, I can't, I can't afford to keep some money in the, uh, to work on that, but I'm ready to go move forward, so.
Any, any, uh, questions, comment?
I think I asked all my questions, uh, at the last meeting.
Staff have anything?
Yes, sir, we do not.
This is the same location at the A and D Carpet or whatever that?
Uh, there used to be a car wash there.
Yeah, car wash and then a carpet place, uh, also, yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I really don't have any other questions, cause you have a very minimal number, what, six lots that are six parking spaces you want?
Yes, sir, I got a minimum of six or seven. Um, one of them's handicap, that leaves me about six.
Doing that up there. And then you'll have a small office space inside one door?
Yes, sir, right there where the, um, we can get a closer view, but yeah, it's an office space right there at the, where the six parking lots are.
Okay. Now, I, I, I think I understand, I, I really don't have any problems. I think that, that's good. I appreciate, uh, what you're doing there and trying to make some money and create more of a tax base for the county.
Thank you. Any, anyone else?
I have no problem with it, look, looks good. Okay, you go ahead and process on with the building project, appreciate it.
Next, we have a potential land development of sportsman, boat and RV storage. Pries and Pickett LLC is considering proposing the development of an outdoor, uh, self-storage facility. Boat and boat and RV storage, this located off Martin Town Road near Sportsman Corner. Parker zero eight zero 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 one zero nine eight zero zero zero. Benjamin, Daniel, and your Nathan Botley, you are, Botley, Botley?
Yeah, I'm Daniel.
Okay.
I'm Jonathan.
Alright, uh, they're developing with him, they gonna, you wanna outline what you have in plan here?
We, uh, we've got a twenty-five acre lot there and our plan is to take, uh, and clear about right up, like a little over seven acres and then fence in five acres, uh, which you can see there. Um, and then we'll have six-foot chain link fence with three runs of barbed wire on top. Um, and then we'll have a hundred, a hundred and four parking spots total.
Yeah, approximately a hundred.
Um, on, on that, on that five acres. And it will be gra, it'll be a gravel lot, no, no pavement.
Gravel lot.
How wide will the entrance way be that comes in off of, uh, Martin Town Road?
It's gonna be standard twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet?
Yes, sir.
Think that's big enough?
Uh, I mean, I, in our investigations on what we've read, uh, that's standard. I mean, if, if somebody has a suggestion, we can definitely.
Well, I, I didn't know if it, if you got some big campers and stuff that you're gonna be storing in there, big boats or things, you know, that's, I don't know, it's just for consider, I don't want it to be a, a hazard there with somebody's pulling in with a great big boat.
Right, right, and, and it's, uh, you know, what we, what we read was, you know, I mean, it's on a straightaway, you know, and, and it was, as far as swinging wide, I mean, the capabilities are all there, but I mean, we've got the room. Obviously, you can see we've got the room to do more. That was just DOT, uh, you know, kind of a normal, normal regulation.
And, and on the first, this is out here, you do have, uh, the three, three lanes there, so you got the two axes returning one way or the other, and then a one entrance on, on one side.
Okay, again.
How, how big, how big are those spaces?
So the spaces right now, uh, for this design are sixty by fifteen.
So, alright, I see the, the flow of the traffic in a sense coming around there. I see what you're getting at there, yeah, okay, I see that. So you do have the potential that you could really basically double this size there on the land you have?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we hope that's the problem. Uh, that, that's our, uh, that, that, our, our, I mean, the, the square there that we've got, we've, we definitely have room to expand, uh, to the back, good Lord willing, uh, so yes, sir, that's our hope.
And you guys are the owners of that property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there lighting in there? You got any kind of security?
It's gonna be security lighting by Aiken Co-op.
It, uh, gated?
It will be gated, yes, sir, it'll be a mechanical gate there, uh.
Residents can punch a number in and go in?
Either that, either that or a fob.
Yeah, key fob, yeah. Yeah, it'll be some type of mechanical gate that, that will have, you know, obviously have surveillance in there as well, uh, lighting, um, we'll just get a coordinator from Aiken Co-op out there to, you know, make sure everything's lit the way it needs to be and then we'll, uh, we'll decide on the gate as far as a key fob or a keypad. You know, I like the key fob because people coming in and out just makes it quicker, you know, instead of having to stop and punch a code in, so.
So the, so there, no, no paving, is gravel or just dirt?
It'll be gravel.
Gravel?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And not, this is just all open storage, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there plans? I guess it depends, if business is good, you may have a covered storage potentially down the road?
Good Lord willing, yes, sir. I mean, it, it, it's, you know, obviously that's an expensive, uh, part of the business, so we, we definitely hope we, we get to do that. Uh, and that's kinda why we've, you know, picked this corner to kinda just start things out and then we've got room to expand and, and then, like I said, we, we do hope we have covered, covered in the future, yes, sir.
It is a good location.
Yes, sir.
I agree. I live out in that area.
The only comment I've got, uh, is I, I think this is, this'll be good for that area out there. I think that area needs something like this, so I think it'll, I think it'll be good.
Thank you. What distance do you have from the edge of the right away to where your key fob or keypad would be?
Is.
Roughly speaking.
As far as the road right away?
Yeah, like distance, like feet from the edge of the road right away to where people would stop to get in your gate?
Uh, I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it, obviously, we, uh, when our engineer drew it up, he knew exactly what we were doing and we made sure we had enough room for the gate, but specifically.
To pull a trailer in.
Yeah, I was gonna say a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet minimum, I mean, I, what's that?
Is the dotted line?
Yep.
Is the forty-foot mark from the right way?
So you've got forty feet there.
Forty feet plus another, and, but what now, now wait, now, what, what we hope, I mean, it could be inset there too with it, with the gate, i- if, if that makes you, you know, makes you, cause like I said, we've got, we've got enough room to do what we need to do, but that's a, that's a very good question, so.
Safety.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I just would, just for your sake, I just think, double check, because if you have a thirty-five foot fifth wheel behind a truck, you wanna be able to get them well off the road.
Okay. So you said that, you said you're, that is forty, so I mean, you're looking at, what, sixty now probably? Okay, sixty, sixty-five, okay.
Well, that's from edge of right away, not from edge of pavement, so.
Edge of right away, okay.
Martin Town Road is a major highway, state highway, so you got another twenty foot off the edge of the pavement to the edge of the right away.
But if there's ever a road widening or something, you have plenty of room right now, so just give yourself plenty of room.
Yes, sir, we definitely don't want to have to move the gate.
Right.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
But if Edgefield County keeps growing like it is, that'll be a four-lane road in five years.
Right.
Ooh. Ooh.
Any, any, any comments from staff?
No comments.
Okay. What else? So, uh, you say you're gonna have gravel, it's not gonna be concrete, yes, gravel, okay. Cause a lot of, you know, I see they have gravel, watch some go up later, but it don't matter.
Right.
But you're gonna have old, I don't guess, it's quiet anyway, right? Get in, man, it looks good.
The driveway, driveway gonna be paved going in?
We'll have the DOT, DOT section of, of pavement right off and then it'll be, you know, it'll, it'll be, it'll be gravel. Um, we've got enough slope there and, and everything that it, that our, our site guy has told us that he, he would recommend gravel at that point, but I mean, we can definitely revisit that if, if you think we need to.
Well, I think that's the two things I'd like to see is that distance, so you're clearing everything off the road, there's nobody hanging out there.
Right.
And, uh, most likely paving to the gate and maybe a little, little path.
Okay.
Um, we get some rain, that gets soft, those stones work down in the ground and, uh, somebody pulling a trailer or, you know, to get traction to get it up, that, I'm, I'm guessing that's an incline going in there.
Yes, sir.
Considerable.
Right, mhm.
Yeah, so I'd like to see something a little more substantial on that
Okay.
drive.
Do you all have any plans for landscaping, buffering, anything outside your fence?
Leland Cypress is kinda what our thought was. Um, I mean, we're, there's gonna be a, there'll be vegetation between Martin Town Road and the, and the fence line that will be maintained for what is there now, uh, going up on the north end there. They'll, we'll do Leland Cypress down through there was kind of our, was kind of our thought. And then obviously our property borders all the other sides, so probably weren't gonna do anything on that side.
Sure.
Just a quick comment on, um, on Leland Cypress, you know, no one's recommending they be planted anymore in our area due to the blight that they have and are, is being developed. I have about fifty of them and they're basically dying now and they'll do a slow death. There is a, a, a green giant variety that does even better. Um, there are several nurseries can give you details on that. It's like planting Bradford pears. No one wants to plant those, they don't want those, but Clemson's also recommending that you not plant the Leland Cypress, cause they will die in about fifteen years, so.
Okay.
But they are a beautiful tree though.
We'll go with it.
So is that, you're gonna do grass on either side of that entrance and, okay.
Well, appreciate it.
Alright, good, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Penny and Jane Rice are considering proposing the development of a tractor trailer and tire repair shop. Their development located off the Benson Academy Road near the intersection of Whitlawn Lake Road. Parker ID one six three zero 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 one zero two four zero zero zero. Penny and Jane Rice, are you here? Yeah, oh, to the journalists in our wet section here, so you, give us a proposal, what you have there?
Um, did they not give you the, um, the plans for the lot?
Yeah, we, there it is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was just gonna be a shop where the trucks can pull in and out, you know, come in one way and go out the other. That way there's no like turning around area.
You're talking big trucks or size trucks?
Yes, eighteen-wheelers.
Okay, alright.
Kevin, what size property is that, what size lot are we looking at?
I'll show you the GIS of it.
If you're going to Benson Academy, that's on the right or the left?
Be on the right-hand side.
On the right-hand side, I'm trying to picture. Okay, that next to, uh, how far back on the corner before you get to Whitlawn Road, is it the corner there?
It is, it's right across, it's pretty much right across the road from, uh, the airport grill.
Okay, you crossroad, you'd be on the left side then. You'd be on the left if you're going down Benson Academy from twenty-five there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Whitlawn Road go to right, okay, cause they got the concrete, the people that make the sewer stuff. Okay, I was trying to picture in a bunch of junk out there now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Which is kinda my, my primary concern is we have another company over off of Curritown Road that has been continuously parking on the right of way out there with big eighteen-wheelers, blocks the road signs, is a traffic hazard in my opinion, and it's just waiting for something to happen there and, and they're extremely busy.
They also, they, they own their own trucking business, that's why they park their trucks. I don't own eighteen-wheelers.
Okay.
This is just, just a one-man operation type deal. They're, they're.
Yeah, but you're gonna do so well, you'll have twenty-five people working for you by the end of the year and, yeah, I, I, just my concern is safety out there and the looks of an area if you get, we get a lot of people parking their eighteen-wheelers alongside the road. That's, that's my concern. We want to keep Edgefield County looking good.
It wouldn't be for truck parking.
Okay.
Anything like that.
I mean, your lot is really extremely long on other areas, so you would have plenty of room. May not be able to turn an eighteen-wheeler around in there, I don't know.
That'd be, you know, to come in and, and out, you know.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Kevin, walk through the, the coming in and going out, so people can see exactly, get your arrow there so a lot of people can. Okay, there you go. Everybody see that?
Did I say you had some shop plans pulled up? Did I say you had some shop plans pulled up there?
That might be the building you, okay.
Be like a forty by fifty.
Forty by fifty?
Roughly, yes, sir. How tall is that about? Thirty?
Approximately fifteen to sixteen feet.
What kind of service are you gonna be doing?
Um, just some base oil changes, um, tires, brakes, nothing too major.
Are you going to, if, if you're doing tires, how do you handle old tires and old oil and all of that kinda stuff?
Um, dispose of it, um, to the, um, landfill. You pay to dispose by the pound of the tires. And the oil companies have, um, they offer disposal.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
They come pump the, the whole tank out.
How many trucks do you think you might have on site, max, at any given time?
Maybe two to three.
Two to three, okay. It sounds like a lot of what you would be doing would be they're in and out the same day, it's quick turn.
No engine, you're not doing engine work, just, uh, maintenance kinda stuff?
Just quick maintenance.
So no spare parts motors laying out in the front yard or anything like that?
No, no, there won't be like junk trucks sitting outside, no, sir.
Just asking.
He was gonna use your driveway for that, Brett, just temporary storage, yeah.
Can they walk on it? Looks good, I might, I might have to go by myself and get a tire pad on my truck. Okay, we appreciate that, sir, you follow up with the building department. Alright, thank you. Okay, next we got here, our final item on our agenda here is a potential land development, is that Calis Solo? Calis Solo, L F C is proposing development of a solo farm. This development will be located off Outh Road, Parker ID one five one zero 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 zero, zero eleven, zero thirteen, zero sixteen, zero twenty, zero twenty-six, zero thirty-six, triple R. Ben Man, Manuel Senior Project Development with Cypress Creek Renewables and Michael Ford Development, according to practice. Cypress Creek Renewables here to join us today and...
Yes, I've been made of one.
You being in here. Uh, okay, uh, now this on Outh Road, I'm trying to picture exactly where it is, I know where Outh Road is, but, uh, uh... If, if it coming in off of Fort Thirty Inn, which one is closest, Fort Thirty or Long Cane?
Uh, Long Cane is the closest.
The closest coming to Long Cane, okay.
What's the total acreage out there on that?
So the total acres we've signed up is roughly around, uh, a little under twelve hundred, but the actual solar farm itself will only be about seven hundred fifty, maybe eight hundred acres. Um, the way we show it on the site plan is, is probably a little foreboding and it doesn't give a great idea of where the solar farm is, but the idea is we permit more acres and then we use less acres than we need to, so that, that's why it sort of has those grids on there, because that's sort of the total acreage we could use.
So, do you gentlemen own the land or you're just leasing it from the landowners?
Yes, we are leasing it from...
Long term type lease?
Yes, we're leasing it from the three property owners there, they're, they're three different property owners and the idea is we'll have a, a long term forty year lease on the property through the property owners. The way the, the solar farm works is we sit here and develop it for three or four years, it then takes about nine to twelve months to, to build the project. Only about four or five, six months of that is, is sort of, I don't call it heavy construction, but there's a decent amount of traffic. The rest of it is grading and, and dealing with all that stuff, then turning it on. It's turned on and then for the forty year life of the project, there's only two, three people there, max, um, that are permanent employees who will sit here and, and operate the plant daily and they'll, they'll be traveling around the site, but there'll only be two, three people there on a daily or weekly basis.
Are you also associated with any of the other solar farms that are along I twenty out here in, in either Edgeville or Aiken County or?
Yeah, so, so, so not those ones there, we, we did develop and construct two projects near Saluda. Um, one just west of Saluda, Wee Stallone, and the one just southeast of Saluda, we, we developed, we've developed probably twenty-two projects throughout South Carolina. Uh, the biggest ones we've built are down near Bowman, South Carolina, uh, right in Orangeburg County, but we've developed projects in Saluda, down in Hampton County, Estill County, uh, up in Spartanburg County, uh, one out in Dillon County, um, we've developed, we get about, about twenty-two projects and over three hundred megawatts. So the one out here will be about seventy-five megawatts AC of power, um, that's what goes on to the electrical grid. The solar panels will generate about a hundred megawatts DC of power, um, and that converts to AC via the inverters on site. The, the, the way a solar farm works is there's steel posts driven into the ground about five to seven feet. On the steel posts, it's steel racking, um, that's what moves throughout the day with the sun. On the steel racking sits solar panels. Those are made of silicone and, and glass really, and so those sit on the racking throughout the day, tho- those, those are the things that move. So out of the, the eight hundred acres of, of the solar farm, really most of that is just solar panels. For every probably twenty-five, thirty, forty acres of solar panels, we have one inverter. The inverter sits on a concrete pad, probably ten by fifteen, may, maybe a little bit bigger if we have two. That, that's really the only concrete on site. We have about twenty-five of these pads. That's what converts the solar panel energy from DC to AC. The inverters then send the power back to the substation, the point of interconnection. Um, it's really on the far eastern side, um, along, yeah, so it's sort of really the far eastern side there. What, what that is, is, um, we, we will have a small two or three acre substation and then Santee Cooper is the one whose electrical lines, one right there. They will have a small two to three acre substation, um, that steps up the power from the voltage that's in the site to the, the, the high voltage lines that run along there.
Santee Cooper is up there, that's the utility?
Yeah, so that's the utility, yeah.
That's the line that pulling from, uh, twenty-five north back, right, right?
Yeah, so that, that's coming from the west, um, and then it runs to the east and, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll push the power wherever Santee Cooper pushes the power.
Right, okay. Only one other little technical question. No mirrors used in this solar farm here for direction arrays or other things like that?
Yeah, the, 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 the solar panels are one, designed to absorb the light, that's what they use to create energy, so if they're reflecting light, someone's not going right. On the second piece, they're off, they also have anti-reflective coating on them called arc, and so they have, for, for those reasons, they're not reflecting anything, um...
Yeah, right, no, it's just for maybe it was sent to use out in the desert areas, so you sell some.
Okay, so you, 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 have you already, uh, leased the land already, you in, in the, negotiating on leasing the land or what?
Yeah, so we, 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 we signed the lease contracts with, with the landowners probably a couple of years ago by now, but it's, we're still in the option period. The, the, the way the lease contract works is that we sign the lease of them on day one, we develop it, we sit here in front of y'all, we work with Santee Cooper, we work with the environmental folks, we go get a, a stormwater, uh, pollution prevention plan. Then about two to three years later, we commence rent and start building the property, um, but we, we, we are not in the forty year lease right now. That, uh, starts once we start construction and, and, and build the plant.
So you will, in the lease, you'll be the owner of the facility on the lease, right? Okay, uh, in event that, uh, you fold, is there a cleanup plan for, you know, all that solar stuff in there?
Yeah, so, so I guess to back up for a second, the way the solar farm works is there'll be us who, who owns the solar project at Cypress Creek Renewables. We'll also bring in a, a, a long term lender who lends us money for the project and effectively we, we pay that back like a mortgage, so they're involved for about twenty or twenty-five years. Then we also, for however long the federal government gives them to us, have federal tax credits and so we have a, a third investor, a tax equity investor who is there and takes advantage of the tax credits. So for anywhere from twenty to twenty-five years, we have a bank, we have a, a Walmart or someone else who takes the tax credits and they're there if something happens to Cypress Creek. Once they're paid out, Cypress Creek Renewables owns this solar project outright. So we are sitting there with a paid off power plant that is, that is effectively putting free power onto the grid. We pay the landowner, we pay for operations and maintenance. We might replace a few solar panels, we've paid off the solar farm to the bank, to the, the tax equity person. So hypothetically, if, if Cypress Creek Renewables goes out of business, one, there's a solar farm sitting there that can be bought by someone and, and, and can operate. If no one, for whatever reason, if solar panels are not as efficient as, as, as anything else, there are just the raw materials there that can be harvested by someone. Um, and, and, and what we have provided and can provide to y'all is a decommissioning estimate from a licensed South Carolina engineer. Because of all the steel and everything else on the site, someone will want to decommission the solar farm because of the, the, the materials on site that can be used for something else. So, um, for the first reason, this is a valuable piece of equipment that will be out in the field. For the second reason, once its usable life has run out from the solar panels, we'll have a bunch of steel posts and steel racking in the ground that, that is, w- w- will still be valuable and will be valuable to bring up. So we're, we're, we're happy prior to the next meeting to provide that estimate signed by a South Carolina engineer.
But you're not planning on performing the work? I think that was Mr. Burke's question. Are, are you planning on, you would walk away from it?
No, sorry, so no...
You're hoping somebody could find somebody to clean it up or?
No, so our, our plan is, is, is to be there at the end of the project. I, I, I was just giving an example, if, if Cypress Creek Renewables go, goes under, someone else wants to be there. Our, our plan is to own it for forty years. The plan, once we pay off the bank and pay off the investor, we want to own the project from years twenty, twenty-five to forty, and then if the landowners wanna sign up with us again, maybe we do that or we just return it to them and, and everyone walks away happy.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I would also add that the Edgeville County ordinance for solar farms requires that one that has not been active in continuous service for a period greater than a year has to be removed at the owner or not, or operator's expense, uh, and the site has to be restored to a natural condition as possible within six months of that removal.
Okay, good, that cleared it.
You mentioned that you will have to do some type of environmental study, is that part of your, to get the federal money and the grants and stuff like that, is that correct?
So it's not related to, to the federal money, but, um, we, we, to get bank financing, we do a, a wetlands limitation, we go get the U S Army Corps to sign off on the wetlands. We'll do a biological survey.
Right.
We'll, we'll also do a cultural resources survey and get shipos approval for the project.
Sure.
Uh, we'll do a phase one assessment, um, and, and those are the three basic ones, or really four basic ones we'll do, um, as, as, as part of the basics or a, uh, SWIP permitting.
Do you have that ha, that capability in-house or do you sub, sub that work out?
Yeah, so we, 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 we contract out with, with local contractors to do the phase one and everything like that, but we have in-house, um, us and, and environmental managers who review and manage that work and, and have for all the other projects that we have done in South Carolina.
Okay.
So you do archaeological surveys as well as endangered species?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about buffering along the road and around the boundaries of the property, what your, what your buffering is going to be?
Yeah, so, so if we walk out from the solar panels, um, we have the solar panels there, then about twenty feet later will be the fence line. Um, and then between the fence and, and the road, we plan to install some sort of, uh, vegetative buffer, um, per, per the county's requirements. Those will be, um, something like wax myrtles, um, or, I, I think in the past we have used the, the Leland cypress that was brought up before, but whatever is right and, and used at the time is, is the plan there. Um, I, I think for this type of project, I think there are definitely areas where we can leave the existing vegetation and even do something inside of that. Especially on the western side there, I, I know there are neighboring properties over there that we're getting, um, relatively close to on, on the west side and so I think something that we'd be open to is, is leaving one existing vegetation there for twenty, thirty, forty feet and then outside of that, adding our own, um, buffering that we would normally do sort of underneath the, the tree line there between the property line, tree line and then the, the solar farm there.
One of the, uh, requirements had to do with you engaging an engineer to render an opinion on view shed or distractions from residential areas or from traffic? Can you talk about what your engineer concluded about that?
Yeah, so I, we, um, we, we, we do have that and, and plan to submit that as, as, as part of the, the, the zoning application. Um, and I, I think the, the main thing that, that it does talk about is glare, um, is, is the main thing for a passerby to look at it and see glare. Um, that, that's really the main endangerment, I, I guess, if, if, if there is one to, to neighboring property owners to the road or to the west or, or anywhere else along the road. But yes, we, we've prepared one of those.
I'm not familiar with, terribly familiar with that area. I know about where it is, but I don't, I'm trying to think, what is around, what's all the way around that?
Yeah, so, so...
That project.
Yeah, so a lot of it is in timber. There, there are some residential properties to, to the west, as, as, as I mentioned, and I, I think the plan is to screen off of that. Um, to, to the east, um, I drove out there today, it was still generally in, in timber. I didn't notice any residential properties too close along the road coming in from, from the northeast.
Where's Johnston? Point that out, Kevin.
You, you familiar with Long Cane? I'm trying to pitch it exactly.
That's Aiken County up there.
I travel it, get there. So, uh, you, uh, I think if I looked at that, does, ooh, you, you're on both sides of the road, right?
Yes, we are primarily on the southern side, but there's a little bit on the west side.
That's what I thought I was looking at, uh.
And the, uh, the, 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 the way we'll come across the road is by boring underneath the road with our e- electric lines. There, there won't be anything going over the road for, from our site.
If everything went smooth, we went through and knew, you, uh, everything was approved and stuff, when, when would you forecast starting construction out there?
It's a good question. I, I think we would probably, um, we, we might start, um, around the fall of next year. Um, I think that would be the earliest we would think about starting. Um, what, what we're really waiting on is, is we, we planning to put in the, in the zoning application or, so our system impact study. We've gotten that from Santee Cooper and what that studies is our, our impact to the system. We've been told how much it would cost to upgrade the lines. The next step is, um, one, just going through the final steps with them, but it's really working with them to secure a power purchase agreement. Um, Santee Cooper is procuring about one gigawatt of solar over the next year and a half. Um, we're hoping to hear back from them in the next week or two, but we don't think we'll be selected in, in this next part. We'll be selected hopefully next year. And we get that contract and then we start to do our, our final designs and work on that and then again, we, I think realistically, we'd probably start around the, the winter of twenty twenty-two. Um, but the earliest I could see us starting is, is the fall of next year.
Are you located in South Carolina? Are you?
Yeah, so, so I am originally from Charleston, but I, I'm, uh, moved up to Asheville, North Carolina about, about four years ago. Um, Michael's from, from Raleigh, North Carolina, um, but we have, I, we probably have seven or eight, um, folks who work at Cypress who live in South Carolina and operate the plants that we, we own and, and operate here in, in South Carolina. So we have some local presence and again, once the project's built, we will probably have about two or three folks that are dedicated to this one who live in a thirty, forty-five minute radius.
So, uh, Sa- Santee, uh, line crossing that property, are you ne- in Aiken, so that, that sort of thing would be on your property too, right?
Yes, so they're, they're right there.
I'm in the line, cause I know where they cross over in, in the area, so.
Yeah, so they, uh, yeah, yeah, so the, the original idea was to come from Outh Road and go south and then we realized that's pretty far to go from the road down to the, the, the line. So we moved to the east and, um, planned to put it closer to the road. Um, you know, the plan is to leave some amount of existing vegetation there, so it's not ten feet off of the road. The plan is for it, for it to be a reasonable, a reasonable distance from the road, um, but, um, it, it is easier for folks to get to.
Yeah, I think it'd be, uh, uh, the one on, the one you own, the one up at Dominion, before you get to Saluda on one twenty-one?
Yeah.
I think that one is a little close to the road there.
Yeah.
It's kind of a so high.
Yeah.
If you could sit back off, it would be a lot better, but that, I know that, that's a, a so high right there on that. If you could drop off, it'd be a whole lot better.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I mean, I, I, I think the only comment I'll, I'll, I'll make there is, um, I think we've all gotten smarter since that one was permitted and built and I think after dealing with other jurisdictions and, and y'all's ordinance and things like that, I think our, we're, we're required to do a lot better too. The plan is for us to do better, but we know how to do better and y'all are making us do better too, so that's definitely the plan.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question? Do you all run into any issues with runoff from that much surface area elevating water temperature that gets off your site into streams or watersheds?
Um, not, not typically. Um, I think, I think we, 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 once in a while do, I mean, we've built probably two, three hundred solar farms. Um, I think we, we do try to stay far, far away from, from, from water. I think, um, you know, we normally leave about a, a fifty foot just risk management buffer. The, the stormwater requirement is somewhere between thirty or forty-five feet, depending on the area we're in. We try to leave about fifty feet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I think we also don't plan to build south of that transmission line on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
So if you see that sort of middle stream that comes down in the cleared area there?
Right.
West of there, below the transmission line, we really don't plan on building in, in, in that area. Um, the, the topography's pretty challenging and it's also right, right by that, that flood plain and creek back there, so we, we don't plan on building that close there.
Mm-hmm.
Even on the east side of that, of, of that wetland stream that comes down there, south of that transmission line.
Mm-hmm.
We also don't plan on getting that close to the west side there. Um, it's partly the topography and partly, again, we just don't like to get that close to wetlands. It, you know, I mean, if the worst case happens and we do have runoff, it's pretty big fines on us. So, so from a business perspective, one, we don't wanna do that to endanger the environment, but two, it just causes a lot of fines and, and, and troubles for us to do that. So for, for everyone's sake, we, we try to avoid that at all costs.
Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate it. Okay, we appreciate it. This time, uh, unless we're gonna adjourn this meeting and take a about six-minute break, we start our regular meeting. Meeting adjourned. I'm trying to think where the closest residence is to them. It's not a whole lot of residence there, but a good bit of.
I want you to nail still on the application. You have that H C and that servant, and then I feel like you gave me one. You don't have a chance to have one. I don't know. I can I'll swing by the office tomorrow and ground on this. Thank you for your help. Really, I do appreciate it.
Now, you say you're Jerry Smith. You are, okay, now, uh, I I know I'm trying to place you too. I'm trying to, uh. Oh, yeah, yeah, you're yeah, oh, yeah, I've been knowing you as a little boy. Right, yeah, that's right. Now, your prop- your property is closer. Right. Right. Right, yeah.
Right, right.
Down at the bottom of the hill, one hill down there, right.
You're gonna stick around for the actual planning commission meeting and speak, aren't you? Did you sign up to speak?
Yes, I did.
Okay, long as you signed up, you'll get.
Well, let's see, uh. I'm trying to think is there on the gym or not?
You don't, um.
It's not, it's not on the gym.
Oh, it's not on the gym?
It was just that free time coming too. So I I gotta go look at that property over myself and check it out. Yeah, but see, we gonna have a, the only private hearing we got is on that, uh.
Oh, oh, oh.
Land development. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's it. Okay.
Land development application, and there's a hundred dollar fee with it. And then it gets, uh.
It's trying to be some line that called it going probably with the road up there. And classic, down there, right.
Do you have my, I have a card on that table over there if you want to grab one. You can just give me a call tomorrow morning. We can get into finer details. Yes. Yes. I would I would resubmit them since it's a new application. No. They came to a work session tonight just to discuss it with the planning commission. And like they said, they'll probably reapply for October with the new planner. Fair thing.
I don't know what this area, they know to get them that stuff through my property.
Yeah, okay, so I seen, I know where I'm at, and I call that Hamilton Road right there, yeah, okay. I know where I'm at now. Hoover is is Martin, he back there, right in here somewhere, yeah.
Good, how are you? Good.
Yeah, Hamilton Road there. Isn't that right, okay. Yeah, come out and come back right there at the bottom of the.
For the road, what's he doing back here to join me? This is a mile for give to the road.
At least that went well, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Half a mile to quarter of a mile. Utes, I mean, just property back in here. Sam, you know, Sam, Sam and his.
In a lot of sense, I know.
This daughter owns a house.
Right.
Right there, right there. His daughter, this is where he lives. Larry lives here to do. His daughter lives there, and that's where they come in here.
Everyone I've ever seen is one in the house.
Well, it's not only that. He's talking about wood fighting around the back. He's talking about he can't abandon as long as he makes the payments when he's facing a situation. They don't want the address, but you've got nothing out there but that.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about.
And can you imagine digging up five-foot pace that's down and caught down and.
Right.
Yeah. You know, somebody's gonna want that bag.
First of all, I really enjoyed it. We were there. We were.
They can't divide it out. I mean.
What is that? Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm gonna look at that. I gotta look at that anyway. Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, I would I would put, cause I just saw it the other day. I said, now, I gotta go up and down, cause I used to ride the road pretty well, you know, you know. Right. Yeah, coming out of here and that long thing that I'm gonna come out of there. Yeah, oh, yeah, I remember. See, I remember all that kind of video. I know where you're at now, yeah.
The Leland Cypress, they they are dying. They are dying. Now, there's another variety called Bush Giant. It's a different variety, and I've got some of those that I put out at my place on Burton Road.
If there's no water going in the creek, why would it go in?
They are just flourishing, and if you go to any of the uh, uh, ones, the guy that has, he's the most knowledgeable landscape guy around.
All right, we appreciate that, yeah.
Well, he's one, but uh, I'm thinking it's a nursery, uh, there now. Nursery's Carolini, and I can't think of the guy.
Yeah, I remember all that kind of video. All all the kind of video, all the kind of video, that back in the fifties. Yes, man, you know, did I miss, right?
Leland Cypress, mine, and the lambs are just coming out at the bottom. They're about twenty-twos, three years old, and they're just, they just all of a sudden, they turn bright, and then the next one.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a little giant, a little giant, a kind of a, it looks very simple to.
Right.
Right, you probably would. I got some of those giants, and they have grown. They're about eighteen, twenty-foot tall now.
I wouldn't want to say anything, right.
Put them about eight to ten foot apart.
Cause if they're cut, it's gonna come out.
Like this, you know, so that they fill in, not just a straight line, right?
In fact, she was.
Yeah, I I just worked with Mr. Bass six years ago.
And she said, all the ums tell her they wish they could.
Yeah.
Right, oh, yeah, everybody sees those dollar signs in the beginning.
He he can't, other than what the one letter he already wrote. Right, they can't go three down. They're not in. Yeah.
I remember he was a little boy like this.
Really?
He was young and.
Hey, you talked to the guy who Nurseries Carolini.
Yeah, that was.
Now, I was gonna talk to him, I was gonna say, okay. And it's too small of a job, and they're not gonna get much out of it.
Okay, now, y'all, uh. Y'all about ready to get round up here? Let's get, let's get going. We're gonna give a, for the end of the meeting tonight, isn't it?
Yeah.
Appreciate the comments and that question, good.
Yes, sir.
Good question.
All right, get that sign. Got the list there. Get it back up there. Okay, you're signing this. Sign this and pass it over.
I cannot see without my glasses to read.
You ready, Kevin?
I can't see with them, sir.
You ready? Okay. This time, we're gonna call our meeting for Edgefield County Planning Commission, September ten, twenty twenty. Call it to all. We already had invocation, so we're gonna go into uh our agenda for tonight. I need a multiple approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Make that motion.
The second. Motion second that the agenda for tonight be approved. All in favor, raise your right hand. Poser, I'd have it, okay.
Just a minor comment, the spelling on Sam is same in nine, so just correct those in a couple of places.
All righty, uh, we need approval of minutes for August thirteenth, wet session meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
My second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Poser, I'd have it. Now, we need a uh motion for approval of the August thirteenth regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh August thirteenth regular meeting minutes.
And second.
Second.
Second, all in favor, right hand. All right, now, we're down to uh our reports. And I guess, as you all know, we had James Johnson, who was on our planning commission. He he resigned, had to resign due to some medical reasons, and then had quite a bit of talk before he did. We talked about it before he turned into resignation. He resigned, uh, where he served on district uh for member. He served from September the fourth, twenty eighteen, to the resignation August nineteenth, twenty twenty. The staff would like to thank Mr. Johnson for the time he served on the planning commission. And that's uh, uh, Councilman Dr. Kimble. She gonna note, she'll nominate an individual for their planning commission. I guess at the next county meeting or wherever and so forth, for the man of the year term, uh, one twenty-eighteenth to November one, twenty twenty. Comments, we appreciate working with Mr. Johnson. I told my gave him thanks from the commission for what he done here. Public hearing, we down to a public hearing for the proposal of land development of Sam and Alice Auto Sales. Public comments on the proposed uh motor vehicle retail lot. And I think we have one over here that signed up on this particular talk here. We going to ask, is Jerry Bass, Jerry Bass here? Is that, did I have that right?
I guess you don't wanna see.
This public hearing is on uh Sam and and Alice Auto Sales, any, any comments in the public? Okay, no, no. Okay, I guess. All right, we we don't have any at this time. We just closed the public hearing on that. We move on to further business. Our new business is uh sworn in of Tracy Hamilton. And Hamilton, she been nominated by Councilman Campbell and appointed by the county council to serve in the planning commission. And she'll be taking a district three seat, which was held by Mr. Smith. But it's Smith, he had to resign and I think to due to illness or something, and so at the time, we we'd like to welcome her aboard. We're gonna ask our our secretary, she'll come around, welcome her in.
Hamilton, if you'll stand and uh please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
Exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You welcome both, Hamilton.
Sign begins.
Okay. Proposal land development of Sam and Alice Auto Sales. We just discussed it, is a proposed development of a motor vehicle retail lot. And this development will be located at the interstate Edgefield Road, Edward Drive, on thirteen seventy-seven Edgefield Road. Parker ID one twenty-six fourteen oh eight zero zero one zero zero zero. Time we going to uh, in a further discussion on that, uh, inside from staff on it.
Uh, staff has no comments unless the commission has any questions.
That'd be all.
I don't have any questions. I think we pretty much talked about that, understand what it is, and uh, and uh, I think it will be appropriate for that area.
Okay, now, I don't have a, cause I think it's appropriate, and I think in everything, we in compliance, I believe. Don't have a problem with it, so uh, at the end, uh, I recommend a motion to uh approve it.
I'll make the motion that we approve that.
Second.
Motion second that we approve the uh application for uh Sam and Alice Auto Sales, all in favor, raise your right hand. Poser, I'd have it, so I use to deal with the building department on that, and we appreciate you. We have our county attorney here. He, it's good to see you, uh, Mr. Marine, is that right, Andrew? I don't see you that much, but good to see you. We are having here tonight to uh, I know since we've had quite a bit of discussion lately on and some point in other places, and brought him here tonight that he might. And a question you have, uh, that we can stay within, I have a legal bond and what what we can do as planning commission and what we need to in order to stay within. So we have questions for him, we'd like to address him at this time.
Well, I'll just kinda start out. I have never met you before in my life. I wouldn't know you if you walked in my door, so are you from Edgefield County?
Okay, let let me start off. I actually have a presentation planned. I'm Andrew Marine. I've been the county attorney since two thousand and fifteen. I'm in Aiken. I've lived in Aiken all my life.
Oh.
I practiced law in Aiken for approximately almost thirty-five years. I do mainly real estate bankruptcy, so I was asked to be county attorney back in two thousand and fifteen. I've been in that position since then. I've been to several of your meetings, not on a regular basis. Just so you know by way of background, I was on the State Ethics Commission. Governor Beasley appointed me to that position. I was chairman of the State Ethics Commission in the early two thousands. I was on the Aiken County Planning Commission from two thousand and five to two thousand and twelve. And that includes being chairman of the planning commission. And during that period, that's when we did our LMO. That's also when we did our comprehensive plans, everything like that. So a lot of what you're going through, I've been through in very fine details. I am now on the Aiken County Election Commission, so I was vice chairman of that. So that's a very brief background on me. No, I am not from Edgefield, but I've lived in this area all my life.
Uh, I guess my only comment is that we don't have any lawyers in Edgefield County?
You do have lawyers in Edgefield County, but you don't have many. And the the thing is, is the city of Edgefield has a lawyer, the school board has a lawyer, county has a lawyer. You know, the towns have lawyers, and so you've sort of run out of lawyers.
Hey, maybe that's why we're trying to grow, huh? Is that is that what we're doing?
Yeah, you always have more lawyers.
I've always by the, think that we have way too many lawyers, but uh, or too much litigation, let me just say that. But I was just curious. I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't know that Edgefield didn't have anyone.
I've I've been in private practice.
Okay, okay. And you have done practice in Edgefield County, I would assume?
Oh, yes, I do a lot of real estate work here in Edgefield County. I'm usually here at the courthouse and everything, probably about once a week, once every week and a half or so, doing. I do clean real estate closings in Edgefield County, yes.
Uh, you've been, yeah. Ms. Marine, uh, you know, I think I think basically what we face a good bit of now, basically, I've been on the commission, uh, you know, so long, it's time when you say how long? But anyway, uh, on our criteria and so forth on land development. And and it come a point, you know, we have to, uh, we review stuff, we deny it and so forth. And and I think basically the question is among all of us is uh, how far out are we on this deny and approval? Uh, whether I was bound to that, you know, we stay within our criteria, what we need to do.
Okay, but basically, two reasons I see, Doc, you can chime in, two reasons you would deny a subdivision. First of all, if it doesn't comply with the current land management ordinance, if the, you know, it doesn't comply with the county regulations and county current ordinances. And so that's what staff does, is make sure that the proposed subdivision, that they meet all the um criteria. Second reason is, and I think this may be where your question is. Second reason is, and I think this may be where your question is, is we've passed a comprehensive plan, but we have not rezoned the county yet. The LMO is still pending.
Right.
You can turn down the subdivision if you feel it goes against the comprehensive plan. However, if you turn down that subdivision, the landowner can file an advertisement in the paper saying, we plan to continue to develop this. Especially if development is in unzoned areas of the county, they're not violating the zoning ordinance. So as long as they comply with the county criteria for unzoned property, they could still go ahead with that development. Because after all, they're not violating zoning, you know? And that's basically the attorney general has basically said, and I've got decisions here, and I can read from one. In the event the planning commission finds the proposal being conflict with the comprehensive plan, the commission shall transmit its findings in particulars to the nonconformity, to the entity proposing the facility. If the entity proposing facility determines to go forward with the project, which conflicts with the comprehensive plan, the governing or policymaking body of the entity shall publicly state its intention to proceed and reasons for its action. And then it does have to, I believe, publish a notice in the newspaper saying we're going forward. Theory is, is that the public will be aware that they are in violation of the comprehensive plan.
Right.
As said, they're not violating the zoning. And until you have the zoning, you know, they're not violating any ordinance.
Right.
So I think that's the, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that was the impression I got, so that's the main question.
Yeah, I want, I wanna make sure we stay within our, you know, the bound, and I know we had started to deny or approve and then we just recommendation, but I want to make sure that we don't try to put it to a point where we're in violation of basically what the standards are.
Clearly, when you deny, you really in your motion, you should have a reason why you're denying it.
Right.
Because the appeal that the landowner has is basically to the courts. They don't appeal to county council.
Right.
So, and really, speaking as the attorney, we want as much, much information on record as to why it was turned down. Because that's what the court is gonna be looking at. Were you reasonable, was there reasonable grounds to turn it down? You know, and everything, but as, as I said, if they are violating the comprehensive plan, they, they are still able to move forward at this stage.
Right.
If there's, if there is a, uh, we would feel a negative impact, uh, to surrounding, uh, properties.
Are they still in compliance with the county regulations?
Well, if there's, e- even so, I mean, if, if there, if there's potential, um, monetary damage based on values. For example, if, if, uh, surrounding, uh, properties were negatively impacted, the value of their property or their quiet enjoyment of their property as a result of this, uh, of a development. Does, does that give us, uh, do we have any weight?
It still would be within zoning. You know, is, is that use allowed within the zoning? Or is it allowed within your land management ordinance? And that's where you get into the conditional uses of the property.
But the thing with the, with our com- comprehensive plan, in a sense, you know, it is, it's got a lot of information in there. Is, uh, s- I would say somewhat subjective to an individual's interpretation of what is compatible. I mean, those are ambiguous terms, so to speak, for me, it may be a lot different than you.
Right.
You know, and so we have those terms in there, but as we sit right now, since we have postponed, uh, any work on the, the LMO until at least next year, and that'll probably be at least August or September of next year before we have anything, I would suggest. So we're in here back with our comprehensive plan is the only type of legal type of standing we have. And, you know, it doesn't leave us very many options.
And, and that doesn't have much teeth.
A- and doesn't, and at the same time, we're trying to be good stewards of what we have here in the county. And we're trying to do, in my opinion, as good a job as we as commissioners as we can because we feel we do have responsibilities for our districts. And we wanna support those people that live in those districts. And we wanna be open to hearing their comments and stuff and, and trying to do what they would like to have done. So, uh, we don't have a whole lot of backbone to back us up, really, so, I mean, we can't.
Until you have the LMO in force.
Right, right, and, and that's why, you know, zoning to some degree is, it's, it's good and it's bad. But, you know, we wanna protect what the people have and, and the type of lifestyles that people have talked to me for hours and hours about what they want to have for Edgefield County. And I'm, I wanna listen to those things, and I wanna be responsive to those things. And when I'm told my hands are tied and I can't do anything, I feel like, why do we have a planning commission?
Again, we're sort of in the process right now, and yes, when the process is over, you will have more teeth. But right now, because of unzoned areas, and there's still restrictions on unzoned areas.
I, I would agree, and I've said this time and time again during the LMO meetings, and that is, we absolutely have to have the public involved in looking at how zoning is going to go in their area and how that can impact them. Because that is where the rubber meets the road on these things. And when we get down to that part of this, I would urge everyone in the county to attend these meetings. We had fairly good attendance at some of the listening sessions we had around the county. But when, uh, you know, it's this thing between development and preserving what we have right now. And, uh, it's, it's tough, but I think as a reasonable people in this county, that we can talk this over and try to get through those things, and I really think that the, the meetings coming down the road will be very important. Right now, I do feel like a lot of times our hands are tied, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make this, go ahead. Mr. Marine, you mentioned you had a presentation, do you have things you think would be helpful for us?
I, I really just, because I didn't know how many commissioners were new.
Mm-hmm.
Just basically giving the outline of what the council's role in planning is, what the, um, your role is and everything.
Well, I, if, if, if you have something, I'd.
Because especially for the newer members, I know when I was on the planning commission, I really didn't know, even having practiced law, I really didn't know what we were getting into, and I really didn't know about the comprehensive plan or any of that. So, the main thing I wanted to discuss is basically that, of course, there are several levels in developing land management ordinance and, you know, overseeing the development of the county. Of course, you have the county council who appoints you to the planning commission. They have to approve the comprehensive plan, they have to approve the land management ordinance, that's an ordinance. The council is the main legislative body for the county. They also, of course, create the planning department and everything and take care and oversee that. But they also do have to, of course, approve PUDs, planned unit developments, where their zoning ordinances, the overall ordinances, they have to approve all that. But you're really more in the details than county council is, because of course you are the one that presents the comprehensive plan to them, land management ordinance, which the comprehensive plan for the new members, that's done once every ten years. And it does have to be reviewed every fi- you know, every five years, but usually the ma- land management order is redone every ten years. And that's what you're redoing right now, so it'll be five years for you to review it, and then ten years for you to look at it all over again. You do approve, of course, major subdivisions and land developments. Minor subdivisions is usually with staff, and there's a definition in our ordinances between the difference between the minor subdivision and the major subdivision. The minor subdivision is just small parcels are usually divided three, four pieces or so, and you really don't get involved with that. You get involved when the roads, when there's sewer drainage issues, things like that, in the dev- subdivision. And of course, you create the policies to carry out those plans. You also, um, deal with some other minor issues, street dedications, street namings and everything. And then also the enforcement of violations, you know, if people do violate, you know, if you turn something down, they still go ahead and develop. Of course, you can get an injunction against them, you can, you know, sue them, you can force them to stop. There, they can't really sell lots in the subdivision until you approve things. So you do have some power there, but that's after the subdivision come to you, or if they refuse to come before you. There's another commission, which is a zoning board of appeals, which mainly deals with zoning issues. And they are the ones that determine if somebody wants to have their property rezoned or a different zoning. And if they turn that down, then they can appeal to the courts for that. As I said, county council doesn't get involved with that, and when you turn plats down, that doesn't go before county council, that goes before the, um, courts. And as you know, you also have staff, the staff oversees all the records, oversees, you know, public records, enforcement of construction standards, also zoning enforcement. And they also approve plats for minor subdivisions. And as I said earlier, your decisions are appealed to the courts. If areas are unzoned, as I said, the landowner can, if you turn it down, they can state in the paper that they want to continue with it. They still have to comply with all the standards, you know, for the construction, for this plats and everything that are enforced for the unzoned parts of the county.
Can I interrupt you there?
Yes, I'm, I'm through, actually.
Okay. I wasn't trying to cut you off, but what you just mentioned, I think it's a true statement that beyond the comprehensive plan, what we have right now with teeth are the current development guidelines and regulations and those things that do provide some detail and some specificity about what can be done. And that provides what we have to work with today.
Of course, with the LMO, you'll have the infamous tables.
Sure.
With all the conditional uses and.
Yes, yes, much more.
Yes, oh, yes.
Right.
Any other questions?
Well, the other thing that comes along too, just as a comment, as we have seen from numerous developments that have, uh, come about here in the past year, since I, or more, since I've been on the commission, is that there is a growth in Edgefield County. And, and as you well know, a lot of people are coming over from Columbia County, from Augusta, from other developers. And other people are seeing this as, uh, the land is, is really nice in Edgefield County, and we love it, or we wouldn't be living here. But we have a lot of other developers that, in a sense, that we want to have good cooperation between the communities here and the developers that are coming in. And right now, like I said, we, we don't have a whole lot to, to go on, other than trying to have the good faith between the members on the commission, the planning and building department, and our developers that are out there. And I would hope that we wouldn't have developers that will want to come in, uh, make a lot of money, sell the lots, and boom, hit the road and never see them again. So, uh, those are the things that we, that we're trying, that we wrestle with, with up here as members on the planning commission. Because like you said, we do not have a lot of hard firm regulations and stuff to go with, so.
One thing you will have, just so you know, once the land management ordinance goes to council.
Oh, yeah.
While they're thinking about it and everything, then sort of the developments, there would be, things could be on hold during that period.
That's true.
You know, because of the pending ordinance.
Right, right, so I, I just didn't, I guess what I was really getting at is, are, are we going to have another, an onslaught of other things as the economy starts to get better over the, the next six months or better? You know, and people know that we don't have an LMO in place. Are we, uh, there's not much we can do about that. So that's our predicament, from our side of the fence.
Mr. Marine, your experience in Aiken on the planning commission and otherwise, that you've mentioned. I know in Aiken in two thousand and seven, there were forty-nine or fifty large lot developments.
We were doing a lot be- before two thousand and eight.
Underway, yes. And I know that you were there, have been there during a period where there was a lot of conversation about lot size standards. Uh, large lots, equestrian mini farm lots. And I know that's been a big topic here in Edgefield County for the past year, and I'm brand new to this planning commission. So I don't have a context for those conversations that have gone on. But do you have any, um, wisdom from what you've seen as far as the pros and cons of how to navigate what Mr. Oliver was talking about earlier?
Always expand. I don't know off the top of my head how many zoning classifications the new LMO has. But until you're in Aiken, we had, I think, maybe eight. And now we have about twelve or thirteen. In fact, one of them is for agricultural horse equine farms and everything. So just because you have the LMO, you can add more zoning classifications, you have to go through the process and everything. But that's really, for Aiken, with the horses, that's, you know, that was made into a completely separate classification. It took part of the agricultural use and part of some of the others, along with the, you know, allowing additional structures to go with horse farms. So just because you have the LMO in force, doesn't mean that you can't think about tweaking it.
I think we've had long discussions about that at various, uh, LMO steering committee meetings about the various classifications. And I think we have a good system that, uh, I believe will be a workable one, which gives us more flexibility and stuff. But, you know, right now, for the next year, we don't. So we have the comprehensive plan, folks, and that's it, you know? And, and goodwill, and we have goodwill with our developers who want to come into this county.
Basically, you know, uh, I think we've done well over the year, 'cause it's been, it's been a long struggle, but, you know, we improved and, and we've been able to compromise a lot, and I, I know that, if you.
I must say, one thing I appreciate is, Aiken did not have work sessions.
Right.
Like you have. You know, I can tell you on the commission, we just get things blind, and it's nice to have those work sessions where, you know, you can ask questions and do things back and forth before, you know, people are on the hook. So I, I do think that's a great thing to have.
But I agree too, I think that's been very helpful, and I don't know who instituted that, but that's, uh, it is a good thing. Kevin, uh, Kevin, you're getting finger pointed at you, so I think that's positive.
I believe that was Doc before I got here, but I will take the credit.
No, I think having that discussion, I think that's what I call goodwill between the commission and the developers and the, the landowners, others, so.
Well, we, we appreciate you coming, and, uh, we, uh, like I say, I think, we haven't done the best in the world, but it's been, like I said, it's been a long struggle. I've been on the planning commission ever since I've been here, and, uh, and we come a, a long way from scratch in between the county administration and, and we got a good staff on the building department, they work with, we work together. And I found if we work together, that thing will work out and compromise it. We never had a really split on this planning commission since I've been here. We have, you know, most time we announce on what, little amount of stuff, but you're gonna have that disagreement. But I think in the future, if we find we get the LMO, I think that's gonna work out fine.
Aiken was very similar fifteen years ago, where we just had what was called fringe zoning, which is North Augusta and Aiken, there was zoning around that. And the rest of the county was unzoned, especially Midland Valley was unzoned. And a lot of the people in Midland Valley realized, yes, you know, over time, that maybe there should be zoning.
Right.
You know, but there, and I think the same thing is sort of happening here, where people are realizing as more people come in, that, you know, there is positive reasons for zoning.
Right.
You know, zoning does have a bad name attached with it, and for those around, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, when we had the other bout with zoning that we had here in the county, uh, there was some extremely big shouting matches and other things like that that was going, it wasn't real civil. But I, I think now if people will understand, if you have the right kind of zoning for where you're at, it can be a, a blessing for both, for everyone, really. You get the right things, and I know, I wanna do what I wanna do on my property, for the most part, unless my wife tells me otherwise, so. But, you know, trying to have continuity within an area is really what I'm, I'm big on, you know? I know there'll be controversy over the, the solar farm up there, because, I mean, it's, it's, it's something different. We don't really have that much in Aiken County, and the only one, or in Edgefield County, the only one we have is right on the border, right here on Bettis Academy Road area, so, that I know of.
Appreciate you, have a good day, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That for y'all clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that clear? This time, we appreciate public comments, we'd love to see, be welcomed to ten hour meeting, this way if you know what's going on, it helps everybody, we, if more people attend, and once we get this crisis over with the epidemic and so forth, that night thing will roll on well, we appreciate, uh, Paradise being in all, and so at this time, we gonna, a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second, or second, be the adjourn, appreciate you.